All right, good morning, everyone. Let's call to order this border Franklin County Commissioner's meeting for Wednesday, December twenty-third.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, if you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and today's invocation will be led by Pastor Drew Redding of the Grace Community Fellowship. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, Pastor.
Yes, if you would, pray with me. Heavenly Father, mighty God, during this Advent season of waiting and preparation, we pray that you would be meeting us in this time, that you would be preparing us for what you have next, that you would be granting us a new measure of understanding of your will, that we would be beacons of hope right now in a world that really seems to be needing hope. We pray that you would bring that. We pray that you'd be the source of that. We pray that you would bring peace in our community and in our nation. We pray that we would be able to experience joy and that we would know the full measure of your love. Heavenly Father, I pray for our commissioners, that they would just continue to be blessed with wisdom, with discernment, that you would be directing their hearts. We pray that as they enter into Christmas, that you would meet them in that space, that you would be blessing their families, that you'd be watching over them. We thank you so much, Heavenly Father, for what you do in our lives, that you are a personal, reach out and touch us, loving us kind of God, and we thank you for that. And we pray these things in your son's holy name. Amen.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you being on today.
You're welcome.
Is there any correspondence or organizational business, Derek?
Yeah, no, sir.
Any public comment, Janet?
No, sir.
Our consent agenda today would include minutes from our December sixteenth meeting, tax change orders in the amount of sixty-eight dollars, twenty-six cents, and special claim vouchers in the amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-five cents, those are related to the CARES Act funds from the federal government, and seven emergency vehicle permits. They're mostly from volunteer fire departments and a couple from the sheriff's office. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
All right, Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our first item of business is to consider holding a budget hearing to amend the 2020 county budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Janet Paddock. And we do this every year. We review all of our financials at the end of the year and make sure that we're going to be in compliance for our audit. This year, we'll be amending three funds. These are, two of the funds are funds that I always watch to make sure that we're going to be coming in under budget, and the third one is due to projects. So the first one is solid waste. As you know, we haul trash out for the transfer station, and we never really know how much that's going to be. We make our best guess. We try to shoot high, but as we know, the trash hauling fees have been increasing just due to volumes every year, and so we've been trying to make adjustments for that. But generally, we have to do an amendment at the end of the year. We can only budget as much as we have revenue, and so that's where we get into having to do the amendment is by not having enough revenue in the account to show that we're going to haul that much trash. So we have to wait for the revenue to come in to report it. So we are increasing the revenue on this, which came from the trash companies bringing waste into our facility and then subsequently that going out. So they are offsetting a revenue and an expenditure. So it's no real change to the budget as a whole, just some on each side. So the Special Parks and Rec Fund is the alcohol, a portion of the alcohol money that we get each year. As you know, we have a couple of businesses that pay into that. The Dinner Train is one of those. And as you know, we have recently added Buck U. Distillery to that, which I'm hopeful will be a benefit to us in being able to provide funds to our Parks and Rec departments throughout the county. So annually, we will pay these funds out to our Parks and Recs that will submit expenditures. So I know that we've already received some this year from Randool and I believe from West Franklin and Wellsville. So we will be spending these funds. But again, we never know how much we're going to bring in in revenue, so we can't budget to expend those funds if we don't know how much revenue we're going to get. So we've made an amendment to report additional revenue that we've received through the alcohol tax and then show the expenditures on that to pay out to our local rec commissions. The third thing is the Annex Project. And as you guys know, we're doing the remodel in the Annex right now, which we had not anticipated. And so we are amending this budget to add to the capital projects line so that we can spend those funds to finish this project. So those are the three funds that we're going to be amending in this and the reasoning, and I will answer any questions that you guys have about that.
This is Derek, and Janet effectively said this, but I would just reiterate to all of you that these amendments that we're doing today are, in so many ways, just a formality. I want to emphasize they're not the result of irresponsible spending in any way, shape, or form. County staff has done an outstanding job with their budgets this year. And I told Janet yesterday, this is one of my, actually, one of my favorite meetings of the year because we, you know, doing these amendments is a reflection of how we have budgeted. We're going to do some transfers here coming up, and we'll get to talk about that and what our savings accounts are looking like. But yeah, these, as she said, it's so hard for us to track revenues and solid waste, and so that's really what that is about. And then the Annex remodel, I mean, obviously, we made the conscious decision in conjunction with the five of you to do that. We knew roughly what it was going to cost. We knew how we were going to pay for it. This amendment is really just a formality to clean it up for the auditor a little bit, basically. So that's really all I have to add on it. But certainly alongside Janet would stand for any questions that the five of you have. Thank you.
Janet, this is Don.
Yes.
On the Park and Rec, really, the distillery, they hadn't paid in very much of this year, so that's a pretty good jump in that.
Yeah, it wasn't, and we never know how much we're going to get, and I don't know. The state handles all of the collections and the calculations, and I can tell you, I assume that this is similar to transient guest tax. And sometimes in transient guest tax, we'll have a business that's slow to report or something, and then we'll get a jump all at once. So I don't know if that's the situation. I know the, I believe the Dinner Train doesn't go all the time. You know, they have seasons where they run more trains than others. So I would say that that's what's happening is, you know, it's not a steady, a steady number, and it depends on how many people they have riding the train and things like that. So, yeah.
I think after we get past period, I can see both of those numbers for both those entities to go up pretty good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, an affirmative motion would be to approve the amended 2020 budget as presented.
This is Don. I make the motion.
Can I get a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, our second item of business are some neighborhood revitalization applications.
Okay, so we have two of these for your approval today. Two different packets that came over from the city of Ottawa. They're getting these all set, and hopefully, we'll get these projects submitted in for the 2023 year. The 2022 year, sorry, because they won't be on the 2021 taxes because these projects are just now getting going. But you can see there in the memorandum, the list of houses and what rebates that they qualify for. And I put that in the background of the cover sheet. So there are nine properties to be entered into the new residential program and three properties into the residential remodel. As you'll remember, they amended the program here a couple of years ago. And if it is a new structure, if they've torn whatever was there down and rebuilt a new structure, they rebated at ninety-five percent of the increase. So remember that. If there was a house there and they tore it down, you still take into account that old structure that was there. So I know that's hard for some people to think about, but we still will continue getting the tax revenue that would have been there on what was already there. So ninety-five percent of the increase for ten years for new structures and ninety-five percent for five years for remodel. So these are the structures that are going to be entered into the program, provided they meet all the qualifications. You have the packet there. And as you guys know, you have someone sit on this board, so hopefully, we can answer any questions that you have on this.
Very well. There aren't any questions. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the neighborhood revitalization program properties as each meets the program requirements?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. I've listed on the third item, that other round of neighborhood revitalization properties?
Yes, so this is just another group of properties submitted by the city of Ottawa. She sent over two packets to me. So again, this was seven properties to be entered into the new residential program and three properties to be entered into the residential remodel. Again, you have all the addresses there and all of the information provided there in your packet, so you can take a look at that. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Dunn, I just have one question. If it's a vacant lot and somebody's going to build a new house on it, then they would get a ten-year exemption on any taxes on the new house?
Yes, we would still collect the amount of taxes that would be due on the land itself that was, as it was there. But yeah, all the new structure would be ninety-five percent rebate for ten years.
Wow, that's a lot better than what the county does.
Well, remember, we're still collecting taxes on what was, what was there before. So if there was nothing, then we're not out any taxes than what we already were receiving. And we get in ten years after the program has expired, then we would start collecting a full amount of taxes on that. So it's a great incentive to get people into building houses on lots that are vacant. And so, yeah.
Yeah, this is what I understand, that it just seems like it's an awful good deal. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
They adjusted the amount a couple of years ago, and there definitely has been an uptick in the amount of, number of houses built. And so I guess as an incentive, it's effective in that regard. Anyways, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the proposed properties into the neighborhood revitalization program as each property meets the program requirements?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I'll make that motion.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre, second. I kind of like to see, I kind of get, I see where Roy's going, and maybe we can think about something like this in the future, to maybe make a little sweeter deal for people to build out into the county. I know right now things are coming back, but maybe we should look and see if there's other counties or any of them that do anything to make a little sweeter deal for the community. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our fourth item is to review applications for CDBG funds and consider for approval awarding funds. Is Paul on today?
Yes, yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas.
Good morning.
I am bringing to you today a CDBG grant. We still have some of those funds that we have to award to small businesses. And we had an application. This was one that I approached last spring, and his business was doing fine. And I circled back around and called me this fall, and business had really dropped off due to COVID. So I'm glad that we're in a position to potentially help this person. This is for Gilliland Tire in Centropolis. This is a small business, one full-time and a part-time employee. They do meet the low-to-modern income requirements that are set forth by the state. And so we have reviewed this in conjunction with our hired consultant. And they actually would qualify for a larger grant than ten thousand, but we have written the rules and you have adopted those, that if it's a sole proprietor, the maximum grant is ten thousand dollars. So I come forward to you today to request approval that is recommended by myself and our consultant for ten thousand dollars for Gilliland Tire in Centropolis. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
How much money does that leave us with? Is it Paul?
Yeah, after this grant, we'll have ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and a few cents available. I do have another application in process right now, waiting to see how much that will, that will consume of that amount. It could be up to ten. So we're getting close to the end of this program. It's, this will be our ninth grant. And remember, we started with a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Sixty-six hundred of that goes to the consultant, and the rest of it has been directly given to recipients within our county. So it's been a great program.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have a couple of questions. Do we have a timeframe we have to get this money out? And with the new package, is there going to be more funds available, do you foresee?
This particular program, the funds need to be out the door by June, so I don't think we'll have any difficulties doing that. I am not aware of any direct funding at this point in a program like this. It looks like from early reviews that most of the stimulus package is going to be a round two of the PPP, which is managed through the banks, and a refunding of the EIDL program, which is a direct application online with the Small Business Administration. That particular program, however, does include nonprofits where the PPP does not. So as I get more information, we'll find out. This has still not been approved. You may have heard that the president's holding, holding back a little bit and wanting to make a few changes. So Congress is working on any amendments to that bill as we speak. But at this time, I don't see another CDBG program coming down the pipeline. But if that changes, I'll certainly let you know.
That's Commissioner Dunn. Paul, are these, are these grants tax exempt for the people receiving them or not?
No, they're not tax exempt. The federal government and the state will not respond to questions about the tax ramification. I have sent notifications to all of the recipients for this year that they will receive a W-9 from the county in the first quarter of next year and that they need to be seeking tax advice from their tax professional. And I encourage them to do that before the end of this calendar year, so if there's something they can do to minimize any impact. My assumption would be for people that have asked us, and I'm not a tax expert, and I tell them, don't take my advice, but the assumption would be a third of that, just like most cases, is maybe subject to tax. But they really need to seek professional advice on that. And like I said, I've asked the state a couple of times, and they don't want to be in the tax advice business either, which I respect that. So I'm sure there'll be a ramification of some kind, and they need to seek their tax professional.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
All right, well, there aren't any more questions. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the attached application for CDBG funds?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you, Roy.
Commissioner Howard, second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Right, laws on the staff reports now. Derek?
All right, thanks, Commissioners. I want to clean something up here. We were originally going to do some year-end transfers today. Turns out, we are going to do those next week. And when we do that, Janet and I will have an update on where our reserve balances are at. Suffice to say, we're both incredibly pleased with that, and we will have a more detailed breakdown for you on that next week. So the county continues its COVID response. As the five of you know, I've been, was in touch with all of you earlier this week. COVID is continuing to take its toll on this organization. We are battling it in a couple of different departments at this point. The good news is, obviously, we've had ten months to prepare for this. We've had plans in place, and unfortunately, we've gotten pretty good at implementing those plans. And so we are still operating just fine. We have staff set up that are able to work from home and are working from home very well. So at this juncture, I don't expect a dramatic drop-off in services. We are continuing to test a bunch of folks for COVID, and obviously, I'll let Nick get into that specifically. But we are anticipating getting a shipment of vaccines in today. As of this morning, I have not been made aware that we have actually received them. But as of yesterday, we were getting told we will have them today. We have a distribution plan in place, obviously, for HIPAA reasons. I'm not going to get into the very specifics of what that distribution plan is, but we will be focused on, primarily on our frontline healthcare workers. So you can think the health department, the ambulance department. We have some members of the Ottawa Fire Department who work closely with our ambulance department, and then the folks at OFP, who have been good partners to us throughout this response. And then from there, we will continue to target those that are healthcare workers that, you know, are dealing with these people face-to-face. And then we will get into that second phase where you start talking about those over the age of sixty-five and those that are particularly vulnerable. And so again, we've got that plan in place. As soon as we get those vaccines, we will be ready to start putting shots in arms. We've also set up a hotline. Again, Nick can talk if you have more specific questions about it. But this hotline is for just generally folks in the community who wish to receive this vaccine. We are taking their information down now so we can start getting an idea of what kind of numbers we're looking at. Earlier in this meeting, this new stimulus, I believe it was Commissioner Dickinson who just brought it up, was discussed. We're still trying to figure out what that potentially means to us. As Paul said, the president still hasn't signed it and is requesting changes, so we don't even know for sure what the final product is going to look at, look like, let alone how it could potentially affect the Franklin County government. So we are going to keep our eye on that. I will tell you, the rendition of the bill that went to the president provided an extension of time to use our CARES Act funds. So I don't know that, that our own organization really needs it. We, Janet, as well as the department heads involved, have done an excellent job of staying on pretty strict timelines in terms of getting this spent. So I think we, all of our people are slated to have this spent by the end of the year. Nevertheless, it is entirely possible that, that we could end up with a few more months to spend those monies. And so, but we'll keep a close eye on that at the staff level. And, you know, hopefully, as early as next week, we could potentially be able to give some kind of baseline overview of what that stimulus looks like. I don't believe that I have anything else, so unless you have questions for me, I'm happy to turn it over to Nick.
All right, Nick.
All right, as Derek said, we waited ten months and we finally get the vaccine lined out. Advent Health received theirs last week. They were able, I believe, they received a hundred and ninety doses. They were able to offer the vaccine for the majority of the people that are in their facility. So that was a good thing. We're supposed to get ours today, and we do have a solid vaccine plan, as Derek talked about. So that's the excitement. December, I just added another sixty-two positives that have came in since Monday, giving us an eighteen percent positivity rate. And I know that we still are struggling to get stuff reported from the state, and I hate to say that on every call, but we're not seeing results that we know positives are out there that aren't coming in. So I'm sure there's more than that. Well Health has set up in Pomona. That's a drive-through testing that the state of Kansas is providing funding from the CARES Act. That organization I'm working with to get reports of who tests and what their rate, their, their status is, whether they're positive or negative. With that, we've gotten back since the eighteenth about fifteen results of about seventy or eighty they've tested, and they've had two positives that still haven't reported to the state. So those are the issues we're continuing to work through. Next week, Well Health is setting up another site at Neosho County Community College where they'll also be offering the drive-through test. they'll also be offering the drive-through testing. So essentially by next week, with what we're doing at the health department, we'll have three drive-through opportunities for our, for our citizens and also citizens from other counties to obtain a test if they wish. So I continue to work with them to figure out how to get results and how to find out who all have been tested so we can help track those and follow up with positive with contact tracing. We do have a outbreak in one of our nursing homes. I know a few months ago, we spoke about a nursing home that was, that was battling it. We have a new one that we're working with very closely to make sure that they've got what they need, EMS transports as needed and helping them with what's going on. One of the big things that, that we found throughout this is PPE supplies quickly dwindle when you have an outbreak. So we're, we have shipped N95 masks, surgical mask and other protective equipment down there. And also we have been working with the state to make sure that they do have ample opportunity to obtain supplies from the state. So we are working through that with that nursing facility and hope that they, they get through that without any issues. Really, the last thing I've got is the hotline. One of the things that we continue to get questions about is when is this vaccine going to be available to the general public? And that's, that's a tough one to call. We know that we've got the phases, our Phase 1A, 1B, and then we get into Phase 2 where we start really vaccinating the public. Right now, we're looking at a second shipment that could be here in a couple of weeks. It's still going to be geared towards healthcare professionals and high-risk individuals, 60 people, 65 and over, underlying healthcare or health conditions. The purpose of the hotline is we, we want to make sure that if the state calls us and says we have 100 or 200 extra doses, if we can look at the individuals who have signed up and can say we have 200 people signed up to take this, maybe we can obtain that from the state instead of not having ourselves prepared. So I encourage people to sign up. We have had well over 200 people sign up so far since we implemented that on Monday. We've had a lot of good questions. There's your secondary healthcare facilities like dentist offices, Optimum or eye doctors and your chiropractors, they are not on the first tier of healthcare, frontline healthcare. So they've reached out to us asking when they're going to be able to get it. So my departments are busy just sorting through that, making sure that we're, we're meeting the needs of our community and making sure that we're requesting and working to get as much vaccine as possible when we are able to get it. So with that being said, that's what I've got to report to you.
Yeah, this is Don. Got a question for you. I know earlier in the month, I think it was, Casey sent out a questionnaire to all the county for people that would want to take a COVID virus shot if it was, when it's here. Are those people on that list or where do they lie?
That survey was a, was really a survey that didn't identify individuals. So we were just trying to get an idea at that point who or what percentage rate we were looking at. So this one is actually getting names and put to it. So individuals with the county that want to be on that do need to call and fill out that questionnaire.
Hey, you're saying the people that your, your hotline deal, is that just a call-in?
Yes, that's a call-in. They can call in to 785-229-3531. And we have a group of individuals from departments other than the health department that have offered to answer the phone and put people's names in the database. So they can call in, we'll ask a series of questions. We basically want name, address, contact information and then underlying health conditions. So when we do start breaking these out, we know what tier or phase these individuals will be in and we have the ability to sort that out.
You said 785-229-3531?
That's correct.
Okay. And they just call into that hotline and, and give them their information and then they go on a, on a list that they have?
Yes, and we'll have a list put together that we can pull from when we start getting vaccines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nick? All right, here and now, I'm going to keep going. Thank you, Nick.
Yeah, wait, one more question still, Nick. Is it, you said something about a questionnaire. Will they, they, they do the questionnaire over the phone?
That's correct. The questions are, like I said, basically just a name, address, demographic information. And then we ask two other additional questions, like do you feel you have underlying health conditions? If so, what are those health conditions? And then do you have transportation to get through to a shot, a vaccine site? And that's a yes or no because we're kind of trying to figure out how many individuals are homebound that would not be able to get there because that's going to be a whole different thing that we're going to have to figure out how to get vaccines to individuals like that. So that's the gist of it. Thank you.
All right, David Lee.
Good morning, commissioners. So we have our road and bridge crews that finished the, excuse me, the tree removal project on Idaho south of Cloud. Crews also repaired several crossroad tubes down in District 409, which is down in the southeast part of the county. We've added fill material around the Potawatomi Bridge just north of Lane. Crews also added some fill material to shore up the bank on the Appenous Creek at Georgia Terrace and Sand Creek. There were some erosion issues and we added some large material to make that a little more stable. Patch material was added to the low water crossings on Stafford west of Colorado, Nevada south of Rock Creek and Utah south of K68. We patched those up so they'd be a little smoother for folks to drive across this winter. Crews also spent a couple of days working on a ditching project on Iowa south of Haskell. And today, we're going to wrap up, wrap up the day working on a few spots on the shoulder of Old 50 south of Williamsburg where we've got some spots where some of the semi-traffic has gotten some tires off the edge of the road. We're going to put some material in there to fill that up, so make it a little safer. Kilo Construction finished their patchwork yesterday. They've taken care of Sand Creek, Colorado coming into Pomona there. And then also in Greenwood Estates, there were a number of large spots that they took care of yesterday. They are closing the plant down for the winter, starting today. So that means that the overlay work that I mentioned last week, the three different spots will be pushed to next spring. They plan to open the, generally, they open the plant in April and I was assured that we would be the first customer up as soon as they open the plant. So early next spring, we'll get the rest of the work completed. Next week, during the commission meeting, we'll be talking about, we'll hold a public hearing for a road vacation on Tennessee Road. And then we'll also discuss the possibility of holding a public hearing on a, on another road vacation, this one on Stafford Terrace between Kentucky and Louisiana up north. And then we'll also be discussing an application for KDOT funding to complete a local road safety plan. So that's all I have for today.
David, this is Don.
Yes, sir.
Is there, on that land location, I kind of went down there and looked around. There are only two landowners really through that mile?
Uh, which, which mile are we talking about, on Tennessee?
Vacation of the road.
Yeah, then on, on Tennessee Road, there's actually three different landowners that have joined that road and they have all signed. They have all signed the petition, yes, sir.
That, that is a pretty, that's been a pretty shaggy road for a long time. We'll get into that later, but I totally understand their thoughts.
Now, the, all of the landowners were on board with that one and the, the one that we'll discuss up on Stafford Terrace, I think there's, there's four or five different landowners up there and they all signed the petition seeking this road closure as well. So, you know, they're all, they're all in favor of it.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for the update, David.
Thank you.
Janet?
Good morning, commissioners. As Derek said, we're just wrapping up all of our projects for the end of the year and I'm working with all the department heads closely on those, following up with all of them to make sure that we have all the invoices in on those and are getting them all taken care of and ready to pay before December 30th, which is our deadline. I continue to work closely with our consultant, Whit O'Brien. Alicia is our representative and she and I work very closely together, making sure that all the reporting is done for all the cities and school districts that we're allocating money to so that when the time comes to complete our audit, which will happen when we have Rodney from Rodney Byrne Accounting Firm here, we will do our single audit for this pro, for this CARES Act funding also. So we're just continuing to wrap that up and make sure all of the projects are complete. So that's what's happening here.
Sounds like very busy time down at the courthouse. Paul, being, are you still up?
Yes.
All right, would you like to give an update about FCDC?
Sure, thank you, sir. We had a virtual site visit in this new world instead of a physical site visit for Proximity Park. We, we had a, an industry do a virtual site visit last week. And unfortunately, we got a notification, we didn't make it to the next round. But I want to, one, lift up that this was a Herculean effort by a lot of people at the county and the city and through Commerce. It's basically about three weeks' worth of work to get to that point and to make that presentation as well. And sometimes I think folks don't realize how much work you do even when you get a "O." But there's a lot going on behind the scenes that maybe the public can't see and don't know about and that's certainly understandable. The main reason we did not move forward is as this industry, and we still don't know who they are, as they re, as they went through these different presentations, they decided that the rail hub was more important to them than they originally thought. And so they went a different direction. I am proud to say that we, we put together a packet, and I say we, I mean the county, the city, the Department of Commerce, that beat out nine other locations in the state of Kansas. So we were the remaining location in the state of Kansas. So I am proud of that. And that is a good sign that we're moving in the right direction. But unfortunately, we, we didn't win on this one, but we learned a lot. We've got a lot of great information. Secretary Tolan even participated in our presentation. So we got full support from the state and I want to really lift up, the Department of Commerce is a fantastic partner on a number of levels. So it was exciting to get to that point, very disappointing that we didn't move forward, but it's a good sign that we are on, on the map. The site selection company that was involved in this particular operation, their feedback was they were very impressed with, with our presentation, very impressed with Proximity Park. So that's a real plus that we now have another site-selecting firm that knows about Proximity Park, knows about Franklin County and is excited about us. So that's something that's on my goals for next year is to get us in front of more and more of those types of companies so that the word gets out more rapidly and we are in more conversations at an earlier stage. But really want to lift up, especially Janet participated and provided a lot of data. Derek was incredibly supportive and, and just continued to get great support from the county. And it's, it takes a lot of work and sometimes nobody knows it, but I just wanted to lift that up. The other thing I'll touch base on, you, you, a couple of you mentioned earlier in this meeting, interest in incentive for housing. I was just on the phone last night, there's a program through the state at the Commerce Department, the Secretary Tolan and I talked about. It's the Rural Housing Initiative District. I've talked to the director of that program last night. He's going to send me some more information, but it may be a way to provide some incentive, much, much like a TIF district, except this is for housing. But I'll get that information. I'll, I'll visit with Derek and see if it makes sense to even pursue that for the county. If not, we'll keep looking and if it does, I'll follow Derek's lead and, and we'll see where we want to go with that. But we are continuing to look at different ways that we can stimulate housing, stimulate industry, both new and existing. The last thing I would say is I want to lift up Nick and Casey. They've done a fantastic job of communicating what's going on with, with COVID relief. And you were talking about, Nick was talking about the phone where people can call in. Thanks to their good communication, I was able to alert all of our FCDC membership yesterday about that capability and encourage them to encourage their employees to get on the list so we can get our workforce vaccinated and, and move away from this maybe quicker than some other places. So I do also want to lift up Nick and Casey's good work in communicating so that then I can turn around and get that message out to our workforce. So that's my report.
Well, thanks, Paul. Any questions for Paul? All right, let's move on to commissioners' comments and board reports. Rick?
Um, I don't have anything particularly, just wish all of Franklin County a Merry Christmas and hopefully next year, it's a little more like what we're used to.
Indeed. All right, Ian?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I attended a chamber coffee at the Ottawa Library where they revealed the new Ottawa Read book for next year. It is a book called A Man Called Ove. And there's some places in there, I mean, it deals with kind of a curmudgeon, a grouchy old man. And I think it kind of begs us to ask the question, you know, when you meet somebody, do you really know what they're going through? And anyway, it, it really, it's kind of a heartwarming book. But anyway, if you want a copy of it, there is a, a free copy available for you at the library. They've had sponsors that have donated to make that possible. So even though we're all apart, we can all get together and read the same book. And they'll be having some programs online throughout next year. Yesterday, I was not in Franklin County, but do some, due to some circumstances, I was able to see a couple of rural fire departments in action and it gave me a new admiration for them and what they do to leave their job in the middle of the day and come put out fires. It was just, you know, really that, that is a calling, I think, because, you know, they were there, we had big wind and it could have been a potentially dangerous situation that they took care of. And I would echo everybody's sentiments of Merry Christmas and I will definitely be looking forward to a more normal year. I haven't had one yet as a commissioner. I'd like to try one and that's it.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, this is Commissioner Dunn. Just, just want to report that the Area Agency on Aging, they received 100 iPads, part of a CARES Act donation. And they allocated 60 of them to go out to people in need of an iPad. They got to be over 60 years old and it's called the Area Agency on Aging that you think you would need one for any reason. It's first come, first served. And that's the only thing I got going on.
All right. Would I, Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no need to report on. I kind of gave a little update, a little on RC and D right now. We're not having face-to-face meetings. We're just talking to each other back and forth via emails and so forth. This has been a sign of the COVID on us also. But we've had big demands for our, our hundred seat in Hungary and bikes for the month of December. We, I actually, and one other person helped me, delivered over a thousand pounds of meat this month to different organizations. And we put out, I just did a Christmas delivery yesterday to finish out the year. I hope we finish out for the year, but delivered forty-two bikes this month. And handed out brand-new safety equipment and helmets to kids under the age of sixteen. So, and anybody else that's interested. I know Roy and I both had shirts done down at M&amp;N downtown with the logo, our logo on them, and she did a really good job. So, I mean, you know, if it's something there that you want another, something that has to have, put stuff put on that they can't do, down to the sports shop where we're having our t-shirts done, they will do regular shirts and everything over there too. Nancy did a real good job and it looked very nice. So, I just want to give that somebody, another opportunity to, if they want something done. She's already got the print and everything there. You don't have to provide anything. But take your stuff in there and pay for getting it put on, of course. But she has it and it looked, they looked, I don't know about Roy, but mine, mine looked very good. That's all I want.
All right. Thanks for the update, Don. I don't have anything, other than our wall behind our chairs here in the Commissioner's chamber is complete. Looks great. Got the new sign hung. That's it for me. So with that, unless anybody else jumps in, is there a motion to adjourn?
I've got one question before we close out. Put up more moratorium on the service wards. Do you know if Derek had any idea about that?
Yeah, we, the intention is to take care of those the first couple of weeks of January. We decided with the COVID issues we're having as an organization to just hold off on those. So, we'll see where we're at after the new year. And certainly, we'll get a schedule put together and make sure we get those done.
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Thanks, Roy.
Go on, second.
All right, all in favor of adjourned and say aye. All right?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.